Hi, it is two o'clock PM and I am calling this meeting of the Cambria CSD Parks Recreation and Open Spaces Committee to order. We have a quorum, all of the members are present. We have a great turnout from the public and it just seems like a great opportunity to make a quick rounds of introduction because, you know, we've got a great group here. So Chelsea, you want to start, go around, then we'll do the same?
Sure, just introduce myself.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm Chelsea Foster. I grew up in Cambria when I was eight years old. Went all the way through the school system and went down college down south. And my family still lives here, so I come back and forth quite a bit. I read and studied skate Cambria.
Nice hat.
Thank you.
My name is Robbie Hargreaves. I grew up on Vandenberg Air Force Base, so I've lived all over the world. My dad was in the air force. I currently live in Wompoke and I am the owner of Solvang Skate Shop. I run youth and adult skate programs in the local area.
We have a clue why you're here. Excellent.
Now you know. I thought the long hair would give it away.
Yeah.
Laura Swartz, I'm the Chair of the Forest Committee. Very interested in our forest, environment, and all public things.
Tony Judge Rizal.
Shelley Becker, Cambria Love Park, hoping to make some progress in this coming year.
Yeah, I'm Michael Thomas, Chair of this committee and one of the directors on Cambria CSD.
I'm Steve Niffen, I'm Director, or no, I'm whatever I am. I vote. The esteemed establishment.
Julie, it goes to go this way.
Sure. Julie Amade.
Jim Behringer, Board Member, I guess, or...
Pro Committee.
Yeah, Pro Committee.
Pro Committee guy. Jeff Wilson, Secretary of Pro Committee.
Matthew McRaney, I'm the General Manager for the District.
Shannon Sutherland, I am the Vice Chair of Pro Committee and a group here.
Yeah, I'm David Geary.
And David Geary for Facilities and Resorts for the CCSA.
Yeah, great to have this turnout. Awesome. On, oh, and Harry Farmer is, you know, SCA Tutor. That's one of his roles, how his machine shows up. And I think I'll get in trouble if I ask him to speak up, but I think everyone in town knows Harry Farmer, one of the CCSD Directors and environmentalist extraordinaire and lover of Planet Earth. Okay, that's a very important. Quickly, I got info from Cambrian's for Aquatics on November 10, an interesting email, thought you'd be interested, that basically stated they've decided rather than to continue to pursue the East Ranch as a, as the aquatics facility location, they're doing due diligence on what they consider another promising location and have been scheduled a pre-application meeting with the county. And it was very interesting email. It says, "We'll let you know further down the road," but that location ends. As I indicated last month, any committee terms expire in January. At the next December Board Meeting, the Board will discuss, you know, our staff to advertise for open seats. In January 9, the Board will fill those seats. And so be just a good opportunity, if you could, you know, let that, just kind of go around the room and just hear, you know, like, are you planning to reapply and, you know, go again next year? Decided heck no, or you're on the fence? Steve?
Wow. I wish I had a statement prepared for this moment. So, yeah, I know. I serve, yeah, I don't, I'll do whatever we need to do to make sure that someday we have a playing field on the park, right? And if somebody had more money than I have power, then they'd be welcome to have my seat. But other than that, I would probably reapply. How many years is it for?
Oh, yeah.
They're all just one-year terms now?
Two years at a time, yeah.
Two years. So the whole Board is going to go away every two years?
And again, we, here, folks call this a board, but it's actually a committee. And, and every two years, right, you know...
The whole thing switches.
The bylaws state that it's, it's kind of open and interested in who's going to reapply. Others from the public may apply and then somehow, you know, my role...
So it's a two-year more commitment? Yeah, I'm in. They can probably pry it out of my dead fingers.
Glad to hear it. Yeah, Julie?
I will not be replying, so you'll be seeing this seat available to the public because my focus is on a skate park.
Jim? I think that's my opening to, I'm open to applying for other board committees also.
Other boards.
Right, you know, we'll see.
I should preface that, like, I had the pleasure of serving already, obviously, on infrastructure. And so I did feel like this was the best fit, but there's only so many hours. Sorry, dude.
Yeah, that's all right, yeah.
And even if I were to reply, it's still, somebody, you could choose somebody else anyway, right? Yes, so, yeah.
Somebody with more money than you now.
Yeah, and, yeah, as far as money, I mean, you know, you know, somebody named Musk, you may be able to buy an Olympic.
Yeah, you can have a seat on this board with that kind of money, easily.
You know, I, yeah, you know, but I can't be bought, first of all, that can't be bought and, yeah, and...
Collectively, we all could be bought for the term of money.
If we find someone with a lot of money, we are going to be, you know, begging for donations, yeah. But, yeah.
I'm out, I got the money. I'm in.
Yeah, yeah.
Shannon?
I'm in.
Fantastic.
I can't, like, not keep going. That would be criminal.
The energy, yes. And so just right now, I think you read accurately by my gasp and unable to breathe for a moment.
Thanks.
My reaction to what you're telling me, but I appreciate that because it gives me lead time to recruit. How on earth? But, okay, yes.
So are you in?
Hell, yeah. I mean, yes, sir.
And so do you get to choose or do they choose for you? How are your terms?
No, recreation.
Yeah, the, the Board, I believe it's, it's either December or January, when, I believe it's the January meeting, where the Board looks at the committee assignments and decides to continue or not continue. Like, odds are, I would expect that Karen Dean would, you know, continue as resources and infrastructure, very likely President Gray, then to be Director Gray.
Do you guys vote on that?
We do vote on that.
And so what if there was contention? Can there be contention?
Well, I'll actually walk in contention because when there's conflict, that shows...
So somebody could want your spot on the pros?
Somebody could.
Somebody could. I mean, because it's super fun.
Yeah, it is. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
With all the money we have.
That isn't financed.
But do I intend to, to advocate that I continue? Oh, yes.
And so how do they pick us? Like, there's a pool of people who are going to apply and we're saying we want to? Do they just, whatever they want to do?
Yeah, and here's the read on the bylaws and then boiling it down to simple language. We, at some point, get all the applications we're going to get, you know, by sometime prior to the January meeting. It's my responsibility to, to get input from those individuals, all right? Interview and then I'll bring that to the Board. Those applications will be in the January, I think it's January 9 Agenda Packet? No, probably, that's probably up to our state. Yeah, so that would be the January 9, 2025 Agenda Packet. All of the applications would be in there and I will be looking for input from my colleagues as, as well as anyone on the public. And then it's my responsibility, as written in the bylaws, as Chair, to recommend to the Board which of those individuals to appoint. And then, you know, the Board has discussion and I've, I've seen it go in favor of and, and not in favor of what the individual recommends.
But this will be interesting because there's so many seats this time. Typically, it's just like one. Or in this case, it will be many.
Yeah, and stay tuned on the, you'll see on the Agenda for Thursday, the Policy Committee is, you know, we can figure it. There'll be a lot. So, yeah, other questions about that, kind of good to look ahead. All right. So Ad hoc Committee Reports, there, we, we only have the East Ranch Community Park Ad hoc. You know, we're, you're on the agenda, so there's no report at this point. Committee Member Communications, so what have you, what have you got there? And Julia, assume you wanted to use this slot to, to have Robbie chime in because, yeah, because I, somehow, in the reports and project updates, oh no, well, yeah, it's on my, it's on my cheat sheet, but it's not on the agenda. I don't know how I, how I did that. So, Julie?
Well, since we didn't see the skate park on agenda, typically your front of meetings is public comment on anything that isn't on the agenda. So therefore, I brought Robbie and I'd like to introduce Robbie, but come on, yeah, do, just go ahead and, yeah, introduce yourself and...
My name is Robbie Hargreaves. I told you guys, I grew up on Vandenberg Air Force Base. I, I own Solvang Skate Shop. I have been skateboarding for 27 years. I've been teaching people how to skateboard for 18 years. I'm actively involved in solving parks and recreation. I run the skate program for the city of Solvang. I am also working with the city of Wompoke, running their skate program in Wompoke. I'm currently advocating for a skate park being built in Buellton. And when I was 14, I got the largest cement skate park on a federal installation in the US built. It's been there for 23 years and there's thousands of kids that have benefited from that project. It was an uphill battle. I didn't take no for an answer. I realized that there was an avenue going through budgeting and I got put in front of the wing commander and I basically explained to him that skateboarding, it can and it is a positive recreational activity and positive recreational activities can and do promote a positive lifestyle. I can speak directly. It kept me away from drugs and alcohol. It also taught me how to overcome obstacles and challenges. I understand that skateboarding can be invasive and not everybody understands it, but my job as a skateboarding instructor is helping people understand the beauty, the passion, and the adversity that you can overcome through skateboarding. I hear that Cambria is looking to get their skate park built and funded and I'm hoping to see that through and be a part of that and then maybe in the future helping develop programming for the youth. I know that the demographic of Cambria is changing and skateboarding actually appeals to kids that don't have an outlet such as a traditional sport. And so I feel that what I would like to share with you guys is, is my story of, you know, being able to use skateboarding as a way to navigate myself through life and now making a career of it, not just for myself, but creating a pathway for other people.
Fantastic. Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, and I'm just going to add that Robbie also understands that when it comes to the fundraising that we need, that it's time to lean on industry and that we're not looking for this community to provide those funds. So industry it is and outside relational contacts. So I also brought Chelsea and if you could just have a few minutes of your time, that would be great. Thank you.
Can, can I say that, like, at least for this particular committee member, I'm so on board with the skate park, it's not even funny.
Yeah.
So, I mean, we, I think, I wouldn't dare to suggest that pros in general is very, very pro skate park, so.
And I just want to make sure that you guys understand, I wasn't speaking from a standpoint of, you guys aren't in a grantage. I, I just want to express how much I believe that it could be a very positive thing for this community.
Totally, totally agree.
Thanks, Robbie.
Okay. Hello, everyone. I'm Chelsea. I grew up here and I have worked in the action sports industry and basically, essentially, my whole life. It's my family business on my other side that doesn't live in Cambria. And I had the pleasure of being a part of this project. I should, although I'm not a pro athlete and haven't been X things like Robbie has, we have a lot in common because we know how much love and dedication comes along with the skateboard industry. Although it takes a bad rap often times, they've overcome that. I mean, they got into the Olympics. So with that said, it's about having kids have something to do. I used to hang out at the Shell Station when I was a teenager and that's what we did. Many things haven't changed that much, so that's the motivating factors for our kids. And I have a little one who likes to skate too, so when he comes here, we're here a lot. I basically almost have time. You know, it's like, Mom, when's the skate park going to get built? So with that said, this particular location folds apart in our heart because it's an exposed place in town. I know there's a lot of people that have talked about maybe the East Ranch and there's other conversations swirling about that. We've come really far in four years and I think I feel more comfortable knowing if I'm at Farmer's Market that my kids, you know, in a safe spot, been a hidden spot. And with that said, this location, as we all know, was slated for recreational spot a long time ago. And that's where our vested interest is now to carry this project. It's the very end of it. With a little squeak of extra, industry will be there to support. You guys have our word for it and we're working hard. We just appreciate it. I mean, I wanted to ask how many people are in support of it here, but I don't know if I can do that. So.
I'm in support of it, so.
You are?
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, Jim, you're still there. You're still there. You're still there. Okay, good.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, okay, good. So, I mean, you know, and, and if I may, I don't know if I have more time. There's been a question about the kids and their support here. We have a special demographic here with a lot of pros that would speak to them and there's no reason why, it's like, if, if you build it, they will come, kind of a thing. So the day that the ground breaks, we're going to see that, that excitement level go even further for the kids. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Chelsea. And Julie, thank you. I mean, this is great having you guys here and speaks to many things, but one, we're, you know, the fact that you can bring folks like this, you know, to, to comment, we'll need to do this again.
Yeah, and we're just the little guys.
Yeah, we brought the big guys up before and that can happen again. But anytime you have Nisha, who's on, you know, the Olympic team, come through town, you know that it's not about trying heads in beds. It's about our kids. And to finish it off, as a kid that grew up here, that is really, really key for someone to not just only have, you know, biking and hiking, it's good to have an actual hardcore recreational sport outside of Shama Park.
Thank you so much. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, yeah. I think, Robbie, you may have mentioned bringing industry into this. I heard that language, right? What, what does that mean?
So the skateboarding industry, so to say, is like getting, getting more of the skateboarding industry involved. They do, you know, obviously, we all understand that recreation is important, especially you guys in your community, you know, anything outside, away from the game console or away from the phone, using your body, it's going, is going to increase the, is going to increase the likelihood of success, you know, and also mental health, right? And so bringing industry in is, so to say, getting the skateboarding industry involved to support the narrative is, I think, what Julie was referring to.
We can make a trade group, like, what is it, bra?
I'm sorry.
I mean, the sporting group, like, Sina, the equivalent casino, certain industry manufacturers. Or brands, or, I'm just curious what, how was that going to, and I'm not trying to be contentious here and I think it's great.
As far as like a group?
Yeah, like a trade, like the trade group.
I think I can frame it in.
There is, yeah, so there is like, I mean, there are governing bodies of skateboarding, but I, I would say like, the, there's like USA Skateboarding, but they're representing the Olympic side of skateboarding. And that's really where, like, there needs to be more, I think, people that are standing up in the skate industry to say, hey, like, these things, these programs, these skate parks, these facilities, who really do and are needed in the communities. I, I think, I'm not sure if that answers the question. I don't know, Julie, maybe?
I think I can frame it in. It's dollars.
Yeah, of course.
So the bottom line is, you guys have made, when I say you, the district has made it very clear where this project is. We have no intention of taking this to the East Ranch. It's a narrative that I've heard out of this room, inside this room.
We do, inside it, though.
I'm sorry?
Oh, I definitely, I didn't think it was a serious thing. I thought people talking around.
It's very serious. It's a very serious conversation, Shannon. And so to bring that serious conversation to the table is we are working right now on industry relationships, meaning hard dollar. Again, not looking to the community directly for additional sponsorships, trying to fill this financial concern gap.
So, Jeff, if I may, so this is, you know, under the, you know, kind of under the context of Committee Member Communications, since on the agenda, I, you know, somehow the skate park report got dropped off. So I don't know how that happened, but that's my fault. So, under Committee Member Communications, you know, under the context of Julie's sharing, she's brought in Robbie and Chelsea. Beyond that, we're not working this topic. Okay. Just, yeah.
Yeah, I just wanted to be able to bring two guests to present and to let you know that they're out there in the community and, yes, building momentum.
Thanks. Hi, Jim?
Could I ask, Julie, actually, is, is there a serious reintroduction of the concept of the East Ranch?
So I'm going to pause on that.
Okay.
Because under Committee Member Communications, we're starting to spiral.
No, I'm just taking direction. I'm being respectful to the parameters of the agenda.
There's lots of meetings that have been working that issue, if you want to.
Thank you guys for your time.
Yeah, thank you.
Oh, yeah, I do want to add one little thing. I mean, you talk about bringing industry here. We built one of the skate parks, this last round we did in all wood. One of the people in town who does cabinetry came out and offered to teach the kids how to build skateboards. So a few kids went into his workshop and learned how to work with different materials to create skateboards and snowboards. And as a result, my daughter went off to engineering school to build snowboards. So I think that's like a perfect tie-in for this type of recreation people think is so frivolous, but it's not. It's not frivolous at all. It's very important. And that for people who are pushing back saying, "We have no children left in this town," that's not true. We still have plenty of children that are left in this town. We had skateboard, the skate park rally, the whole Bets Hall party that was filled with kids. We have an empty house problem, but we are not an aging community. When we used to have children and people who liked to skate and roller skate, which is what I'm excited about on that park. So I think it's awesome.
During Thomas?
Yes.
So being on the skate park ad hoc and there being a title that says, "Ad hoc Committee Subreports", is that enough room to provide a small, actually, in our ad hoc?
Absolutely.
For the skate park?
Absolutely.
Okay. So there's, there's been, the reason that East Ranch has been brought up and this is eventually, it feels like this conversation is already coming up. I wasn't necessarily ready to have it, but the conversation that each, East Ranch coming up as a location was because of funding. That's why that came up. Because the East Ranch being a location would lower the required funding to complete the skate park because this spot requires a restroom and all the ancillary things that the county requires. So that is why the East Ranch came up. That is why we're having the conversation about fundraising is because there's a potential, even though our grant is ready to be funded in January, we'll be having a $600,000 match from the state, which will match the other $600,000 for a total of 1.2. Our engineering estimates that have come in at the end of 2024, 2025 are coming in high. And the engineering estimates are just what the contractors take a look at and bid upon. We have seen both for the East Ranch restroom, engineering estimates getting bid two and a half times. So there's a potential, it looks like we're short funding for the skate park. Now, we're moving forward with the grant. It's going to be funded. We have a three- to five-year window to complete it, which allows for some fundraising. So we'll be able to keep moving forward with the grant, making incremental steps in getting the permitting completed. We just won't be breaking ground until we have the funds in hand and can go out to RFP and then talk about spending those monies that have been encumbered by the general fund and then are reimbursed through the grant, if that makes sense. So things have slowed a little bit on that front, but that is why the East Ranch came up, is we were looking at alternatives that would be less expensive to construct the skate park instead of potentially not being able to construct the skate park. My interpretation is bringing in the support group and everything like that is to say that Skate Cambria and the community or industry is going to be working on trying to close that funding gap.
Oh, yeah. Previous update? Yeah. All right. Let's move to item two on the agenda, Reports from Affiliated Community Groups, right? And County Parks and Recreation Commission. Just FYI, Pandora Nash-Carnar has retired from that role and Ron Roach has taken her place. So I've communicated with Ron, he said, you know, great, couldn't make this meeting. I'll try to make your next meeting. So that's updated there. Beat by Cambria, we don't have Claudia on. But so Forest Committee, Laura is here, so the floor is yours.
Okay, just a couple minutes. First of all, everybody knows we're still working on the week, guys. We are working on trying to get it into the nineties that it's been a pretty long year. So it's not an easy task publishing, even though it's our second edition. The second idea, the Forest Committee continues to meet. We meet monthly, public, and everybody is invited. We're 501(c)(3). We, right now, we're looking at a lot of the projects that have been going on. We also collect and discuss a lot of the different papers that are written, even around the world, of what's happening with the forest here in Europe, South America, kind of thing, lessons of interest. Denmark, right now, is just said that they're going to plant a billion more trees because over the centuries, they demuded their places. And so now they're having a re-pilgrimage of the trees are in the working environment. So that was one new thing that came up. The other thing that I've just heard, actually from this morning from Crosby, that the Southern Oak death is making a reappearance back up in the San Francisco area. And it's a little bit more virulent this time around for some reason. It hasn't come down this way yet. But we, in the years past, our Forest Committee has joined in to look at different spots and monitor where it possibly shows. And we haven't seen them here yet, but it's reemerging up there. What's it called? Southern, S-O-V, sorry.
That's sorry.
And, see. The other thing, just on a personal, and this relates to the forest and everything. My husband and I were down in Arkansas and we experienced firsthand that an insurance mountain fire, which was extremely nasty. It was 45 knots of wind with 10% humidity. Thankfully, we don't have those conditions here, but we were very aware of it. Our location was bright downwind from the smoke and it was like, close up your house and do what you can to survive. So we experienced that. The other thing, though, we were looking at pictures because we didn't go up to the area. We didn't actually want to get in the way. But so many of these large fires, what we'll see is that the homes are gone and it's spotty and the homes will be gone. But so much of the vegetation, the large trees that are next to the houses survive. So it's the homes and the hardening of the homes and our estimation that has a lot to do with so much damage and spreading and... So it's the homes and the hardening of the homes and our estimation that has a lot to do with so much damage and spreading and everything. But something to look at is maybe work a little bit more on your home instead of denuding our forests and then being like Denmark and then have to replant it when you realize how important stuff is. I think that's enough report.
Fantastic. Yeah, and we've heard the importance of home hardening from every possible angle. And so appreciate hearing, uh, hearing that. So Shelley.
Yeah, hi. We're back with Cambria's off harsh. I um, I just have, we're trying to streamline a little bit because we see how fast the money is going in and with our budget. Um, maybe we were would be able to do foundations and just make sure that the latch, the gates on the latches are working for safety. Um, I don't know if we're gonna have water because of the bathrooms being close by, but it'd be nice to have another water so we could refill the water bowls. So those will be my top three priorities that we're going into twenty five with. Waiting on the gazebo is just getting the foundations in.
Thanks. And again, yeah, questions as as we roll, um, uh, green space, uh, uh, friend not here. We know there's a planting coming up. Oh my gosh, this this uh.
Saturday.
This coming Saturday.
Yeah.
Ten o'clock. Uh, so that's, uh, you know, that's on San Simeon Creek Road. Um, a good good time to be had by all. Uh, Corinne is uh, is committed to doing another round of her PBJ bar, uh, and uh. Anything else you want to. Sure on green space, uh, space. Rancho Moreno, uh, it's not here, um, and Lampington Cliffs, Shelley's not here, but I will say on the Lampington Cliff, Adopta Park. Um, I got uh, the opportunity to participate this morning in the third of their ice plant removal work parties. And uh, it's pretty amazing. It's their their close to fifty percent removal of of the ice plant at Lampington Cliffs. And the uh, if the piles are getting rather large and they'll uh, they'll disappear one of these days, um, but um, it's uh, they're doing some great work. And there's an, uh, the next ice plan removal work party is um, week from Tuesday, it's uh, Tuesday, December third, nine AM. So um, you know, if you uh, you know, if you want a good workout, you can't beat pulling ice plants. It's uh, you know. That's one of my favorite workouts, but it's uh, and it's a good time. There's a lot of great folks out there. And man, Concerns is not here, so so that moves us.
Oh, yeah, Jeff, have you offline when we're trying to get Rancho Moreno here and so on and so forth? Are they interested or are they not interested? What's the general? You know, we're each kind of, we've kind of looked at the same list and.
Yeah, uh, they're they're all, yeah, um, you know, you know, Keith, Keith gets the agenda, you know, and you know, a- and again, you know, the the headliner on this states they, we don't expect every one of these groups to attend every meeting, but it's, we know they're a very important uh, you know, partner in uh, in in open space. Uh, and so we want to keep that avenue open. And you know, so this uh, reminds me, you know, so to to keep Daniel Bowman, you know, informed. And uh, yeah, so.
Yeah, I suppose if they saw something on the agenda that affected them, they might.
Yeah, and and when we get to the point of taking action that may impact the 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 properties that they have helped conserve, you can bet, um, you know, yeah, Laura and I will both, you make sure Keith and Daniel is involved and Laura, you're welcome to comment.
Oh, okay. I was just gonna say about Keith. Keith does come to the forest committee.
Okay.
Okay, so he's very active. He's very much watching the the type of work that they're doing on. Um, yeah. Rancho Moreno, excuse me.
Yeah.
But he very much, I think you're gonna be doing some burn filing at some point because.
Yeah, the intent they've communicated is when it's wet enough.
Right.
Yeah, and they know the forecast is safe. They're gonna be big burns and uh, and I've got it up my sleeve. I would like to find some way to get some, you know, some members of this committee, some members of the board to to attend, to observe, because this is a chance to see, um, you know, we all know the importance of 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 fire to port forest health. And although this is a very small application of that, it's one small step. Yeah.
Yeah, as a forest committee member, my husband and I were invited out there last year and we hiked all over that place. It's a wonderful piece of land. And um, you know, he's very, very dedicated from keeping it preserved under good guidance. So we have high hopes that he is watching very carefully, even more so than some of the other projects that have been done locally. So Keith is very active there and I'm sure he'd still like to be on the pros list.
Thank you, absolutely. And 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 our, you know, responsibility is PR and OS, right? And so open spaces benefit humanity, even when no one can access it. It in in fact, in some ways, when no one can access it, it benefits humanity even more. And so the fact that uh, that Keith is there and that reserve is there, uh, benefits us all. So thanks. But I think this brings us to, uh, it was a little bit scrambled there, but this brings us to the official, the item three, public comment. So what what other public comment do we have of things that are not on the agenda?
I could talk about a skate park again.
I could talk about how positive the industry and how wonderful the sport is in total again.
Fantastic. And uh, and let's just check, uh, there's a uh, Bob Trout on and uh, Mr. Trout, you have any interested commenting here? Okay, no hand up. So I think uh, um, and you know, earlier, a bit of fluidity in the agenda, I think has always been beneficial. So uh, thanks for that. Which brings us to reports and project updates. There we are, two thirty seven. Um, so uh, Mr. Gary, uh, slowly some resources. What have you got for us?
Yeah, come on, Evan.
No, we've been pretty busy just with our guys, just maintaining, trying to figure out a lot of washouts and stuff, uh, you know, just Lady Ranch and also with uh, Ramsey, who's been up there, and also this uh, Berry Trail, uh, Red Oak Park. Um, I know there's been a couple of concerns in regards to the Bird Canyon, the creek bed, and I know those falls with the pros. Um, there's been a couple of emails sent out uh, to my department in regard to getting cleaned out. So uh, diligently turned around, putting out feelers for the coastal commission, the fish and wildlife, uh, different people of that nature, because this is not just a going and remove and clean out the creek. Uh, there's too many people involved in it. And we also need to figure out budget wise, uh, to get them all cleaned out. Uh, with us running with a real thin budget, it's pretty hard. I know that's that's one of the big ones, uh, physically ranch. We're looking, I'm working with Brian Morgan in regards of uh, a couple of pathways where we get washouts. Uh, there on the Ridge Trail and also the Trenton Forest Trail. Uh, those two there, we're looking into uh, uh, putting in more or less an eight inch deck, go across certain areas. So that way people aren't slipping and falling and we're gonna be removing some old washout boards uh, where the trucks used to go. Uh, that's not only going to be accessible during the winter, we're actually going to be basically banning people from going through there. Uh, so that's a project that I'm working with, um, my guys and also looking into with uh, the trail committee there at the FFRP, so we can collaborate together and get it knocked out pretty decently. And the funding from that is going to be coming from the FFRP. We're going to put in the guards of that, uh, because I have the resources for the materials. So that makes a big difference. Um, and going out and buying new, I got a lot of stuff that's being, that's used from a pier down to Nowla. So we're going to be able to purchase a little bit of that and be able to re- reutilize it in the uh, the ranch. Just in general, the culvert down at the dog park, off the county road, uh, ended up digging that out, uh, ended up moving about, oh shit, maybe about four cubic yards. Found the drain, uh, stretched it out. So that way we're just waiting for the next rain to come through and see where it comes out, towards the end, towards our shop. Uh, so therefore that corner will not flood out. I'm waiting for a good rain so we can turn around and bring in the crushed sand and grating. Uh, the parking lot in that area because it's not gonna stick. We don't currently have a water buffalo to spray the ground or a water truck. As it goes, if we bring it in while the ground's still wet, it'll adhere to it a lot better. Uh, and just cut back on the flooding that goes on down there. Uh, I mean, we've been busy. I know it's all little projects, uh, you know, the encampments on our our open uh, spaces. We've been playing more or less tic tac toe with them, cat and mouse, uh, working with Caltrans. Caltrans has a new guy in the vegetation department. Uh, used to be roads, uh, he got switched over and now he's going through and finding a lot of vegetation areas that are uh, more or less housing certain individuals. So once he removes that vegetation, that housing gets moved into the ranch. So we're playing back and forth. So this has been going on for a little while now. Uh, so every month we are approximately a thousand to, what is it, about fifteen, eighteen hundred pounds of trash being hauled out uh, once a month right now. That's where we're at, uh, with my two guys. We begin to knock down. It's roughly about two hours. Uh, but you know, it has to be done and we get out notices like legally, everything else and we do everything by the book on that. Everything else seems pretty decent. Um, yeah, uh, any questions for anything?
Yeah, I I was just wondering about water access with the bathrooms going in. Do we have any water lines coming in?
I don't have any idea on that. Uh, I know that would be for uh, the GM or utility side.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, that that would be a question for them. I mean, it would be lovely uh, on on both ends, uh, because I know with us currently, when we get notified from the dog park, we usually have to go over the tractor, remove the tub, uh, two hundred and fifty gallons, I believe it is. Take it back to our yard, pressure wash the inside of it, rinse it all out and refill it and then take it back. So the amount of time that we spend on that is roughly about two, two and a half hours. So and that's not, uh, I know it's kind of a shot the dart here, but it takes longer to do that than do the public bathrooms. And that's where we're like, okay, that's times two. So and that's one thing, you know, it is a concern also on our half uh, to see where it is, where what's gonna happen with the water situation over there at the dog park. So that is, that that's some of my questions too. I do agree with you on that. We'd like to have an answer on that.
My recall on on the uh, the plans, uh, you know, in between the two bathrooms, uh, you know, you're correct, if I'm wrong, uh, uh, it's from Alphany, there's uh, there's a rain fountain in between the two.
Yeah, and I believe.
And I assume there is a
Water spigot?
Yeah.
Time. Uh, Jim, I think is a panelist. He might be able to speak up to.
He's not hearing one.
Uh, yeah, he was on for a moment, but.
Okay, yeah. Um, I'll have to confirm with Jim to to find to find out. Um, I don't remember the conversations about piping in water to the dog park, but I can follow up with him.
Yeah. Okay, thanks. So, yeah, but thanks Shelley. Other questions for David? A lot going on. And are are you uh, are you fully staffed or you're 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 still?
Still, so our last recruitment right now, it's got notification today. Uh, it looks like the background check, so everything's cleared. Uh, I am going to be meeting with him tomorrow morning at ten o'clock. Uh, more or less people walk through with our shop and stuff like that. They are getting a shirt size. Yeah, new new member. So they'll be our third member for everything that we do. Um, and also, and I want to throw it out there too. We are going around. I have my guys doing on a regular basis, Mondays and Fridays, going through our open lots. Uh, driving through, uh, because I know with the weather that's coming through, the downed trees are a big concern that we have from the community. So I have them actually going through off of our list and also our maps, keeping an eye out on certain ones in trouble ones. Um, I already met with uh, Cuffey, I know, one of the firefighters up at the fire department in regards to bombing some of the trees that we've already looked into to save the district money, asked for a contract, you know. So we are doing, I mean, our guys are staying busy.
Appreciate it. All right, um, so uh, so FFRP, um, Kitty is uh, and her husband, uh, Jerry are on a long holiday. Um, so we don't have an FFRP report, but we know FFRP is in trail repair season. If anyone is uh, you know, interested in getting involved, uh, tomorrow morning, uh, Brian Morgan has the work party meeting at the Santa Rosa Creek Trail entrance at the at the foot of the uh, creek to Forest Trail, um, to do uh, erosion control and and outfalls. So um, always looking for volunteers uh, on the ranch. And I think everybody knows, but October twenty sixth was the the appreciation and dedication for the uh, the linking boardwalk trail, which had been opened several weeks earlier. So again, um, uh, awesome uh, project by FFRP to create that um, accessible loop on 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 the ranch that uh, that involved no public funds. So. Yes, who we have, yes.
Excuse me, back here. She's a New Zealand. I'm so jealous. But the thing is, there's on the Chipton side, they did put up another um, an entrance, right?
Yeah.
How do you describe that?
That's messy board. It's more or less the trailhead board, the one that's up there. Is that what you're talking about?
Right, right. Yeah, we just saw it the other day. It's quite nice. It's quite fancy. They condensed all the little different signs and.
So on the behalf of that one there, I know when I first came on, that was one of the things I kind of had a conversation with Kitty about with the conservation easement and also all these posts all over with all the signs. So working with her and Walt and a couple of different other people, we've actually more or less isolated one trailhead. Um, I know this is all on the FFRP side that they turn around, they think it's all funded by them. So what we're looking at, that was a demo, uh, that an individual ended up making uh, here in town. And that's why we're on the progression of pursuing it on multiple hit trailheads. So so that way all of our um, signage will be all on one board, uh, because it's kind of scattered throughout the entrances when I yeah, it felt like it needed to be organized, redirected.
Thanks. That's a good question. I walked right by there. They didn't even notice it. That's the best part. So um, this is the point on the agenda, East Ranch Committee Park restroom update. Um.
Yeah, so we um, just um, had approval for both of the um, environmental monitoring and the installation contract. Um, Hartzell was ordered the RF, um, the contract. They are targeting an install for late January, early February. We'd wanted to do it in uh, earlier January, weather depending, but they're not available, but they were also the lowest bidder. So we're kind of we're we're budgeting a little bit there, but they're gonna try and get that installed in February. Um, and we're on track.
What's the name of the contractor?
Hartzell.
Hartzell.
Hartzell, H A R T Z I E L L.
Correct.
And a lot of that information is in the agenda packet from last week.
Good question. What is the projected total cost of the bathroom?
Uh, are you talking about the installation piece or the all of it?
All of it.
So the restroom, I don't have the numbers in front of me, but I believe the restroom cost is about a hundred and ninety thousand. Installation is a hundred and eighty thousand. Uh, environmental monitoring is gonna be about forty thousand, permitting twenty five thousand. So someone do the math on that. We're approaching half a million.
I had it up for the last meeting and I had four forty seven uh, was the number. I had for the the what's spit already and the the two contracts that are uh, committed. And there may be more ancillary costs, but uh, well below what is budgeted. And so um, it and you know, this committee is gonna have its eye on whatever's uh, budgeted. Uh, well, okay, um, it was uh, dedicated to the restroom and uh, you know, if there's remaining funds, you're, we're gonna want that back for uh, Parks Recreation, Skate Bar, Skate Bar.
Um, the uh, remind you, there's a grain in there that helps pay for some of the restroom on this. Um, yeah, so some of those costs will be reimbursed once the restroom is installed. Um, other about the restroom?
Shelley.
Walkway, is there gonna be a ADA?
There will be.
Walkway from the parking lot.
Correct.
And now, um, I I know the restroom doesn't really pertain to me, but uh, are these like individual restrooms or are these like, you know, there's multiple uh, toilets within the women's restroom or?
Single, single.
And it's that much?
Yeah, two.
Yeah, two.
I, I, I used to build houses and that.
Yes, it hurts my heart.
Sounds like maybe gold tile or?
But, uh, it's, it's a public works project.
Yeah.
It, it's easy to, you know, you, you. You will talk about why not, share what it is. No one happy, but that's what it is.
No problem, thank you.
Is environmental monitoring for the future, is that just something that is occurring now?
That's occurring during installation.
To ensure that the installation contractor, installation meets all the requirements set out in county permit. Uh, good questions. Or anything else? Then, alright, um, the two hit one, the, uh. The general easiest part, consent agenda, any changes needed to the minutes from the last meeting, changes? Okay, so a couple arms, um, and, uh, so.
Yes.
Jim?
Hi. Hi.
Hi.
Five eyes? I find that easier than to say, then we disagree, because, because then we have, uh, since it's recorded, you know, folks can't see. Um, but unanimous approval of the consent agenda and we're not surprised, um. So, so now, uh, the, uh, main course of today's agenda is the update. On the draft community park phase three plan engagement sessions, um. And, uh, Shannon, you wanna kick off? I think, um, if you have info to share, then, um. And how do I?
I don't know.
Okay, there you go. Yeah, because Haley sets you up as presented so perfect.
Yeah.
And we, you can make it bigger or do I need to do something, make it bigger?
I don't.
It's bigger on yours, so I'll do it here.
You won't be, the only way you would be able to do a direct promise is, I think, is if you zoom in on your screen by hitting. Your Windows person, Command plus, uh.
Fire Windows?
Full screen?
Right here, because now.
Oh, boy, I just, uh, knocked it out there, okay.
Function maybe, function plus?
I'm a Mac guy, so. Well, it's, there's more. But we can slide over Shannon's, uh, this piece right here.
There you go.
It might be as good as it's gonna be.
And I can move this all the way.
Okay, yeah, I see it on the screen a little bit.
Okay. Um, well, the engagement session is meant to be, uh, October, November. Ending around the first week of December, um, and it is in absolute full swing. And we are killing it, I think. We have about a hundred responses on the feedback form. From people logging in to, to answer our feedback questions. Um, I, I do have that, I can show that to you if you wanna see it, but I can tell you that the responses for every single one of the components are overwhelmingly positive. Um, there are some, there are some feedback suggestions, there's some really weird stuff. I don't know what people they're doing, but, um, and of course, there are some naysayers, I think the, the majority of people who are against it are, just wanna keep it. Um, from anything from happening and we don't want it to turn into a city of Cambria, so I think that's not the intention of this project for sure. Um, I do wanna back up just a smidge. Um, because this is the first I've ever heard that we are seriously considering moving the skate park onto the East Ranch. And of course, we did this, all this work on phase three and all the components as far as phase three plan goes. And that, you know, there are places for everything and whereas I, I absolutely get why we want the skate park where it is. And I'm not like opposed to moving it, like if that was gonna kill the project, I don't wanna kill the project. I can see it moving onto the East Ranch. Um, but does that kill our whole plan that we've come up with? And the position of each one of these activities?
Just define kill.
Well, we would have to make room for it and we have, you know, we have room, um. But would it display something, possibly display something that we already have assigned for an activity?
That's a good question, so.
And our whole plan is kind of.
We'd have to rearrange for sure.
Yeah.
So, there's a lot of things that are gonna go into your community park plan, you know, working with Jeff, we need to have a pre-application meeting with the county. Because of the flood zones, flood plains, the county might have s- some, some concern about any one of the locations that you've already designated.
Right.
And in terms of that flood plain, so those kind of still are unanswered questions in terms of what would have to be shifted. For the skate park, it is just an exploratory exercise in terms of what are our alternatives if we can't meet funding. Because again, the cost of constructing the skate park in the East Ranch would be significantly less expensive. Because we don't have to have a restroom, purchase a restroom and all of the. Uh, uh, accessory features that the county wants, you know. I would say sixty-six percent to seventy percent of the overall cost of the skate park project across the street doesn't even have to do.
Yeah, capital improvements for sure.
Well, it's, it's not, it's, it's not even the ramp of the skate park features, it's everything else, drainage basin, retaining wall, hillside, parking lot. And all of that really kind of goes away, so that's why it was brought up, because we, with this grant, um. Only have this amount of money allotted, um, the board of directors, before I got here, allotted a certain amount towards the skate park. So, when you look at those numbers and you're looking at engineering estimates and, and potential bids. We're short, and so we're trying to find creative ways to make sure the project still moves forward. Now, uh, Skycambers and the community council made it pretty clear that they didn't, they didn't wanna cede on the East Ranch. Um, if we even entertain putting on the East Ranch, it's a whole reset for the grant. We would apply it to the next grant and turn down this grant.
Saying, this is outrageous, these talks are outrageous, I'm sorry.
Julie, you have to think outside the box if we're looking at failing on being able to construct the skate park or do we have alternatives? I'm not saying that's happening. I'm the one that's looking at, okay, what are all alternatives, okay? Call it crazy, call it whatever you want, I'm just saying.
Crazy, I'm saying we're not failing.
I'm not saying you're failing, I'm saying, w- w- when we look at, um, potential threats, right, threats to the skate park construction. I'm in favor for, of the skate park, I'm looking at the threats and alternatives. It was merely brought up that there is an alternative with the East Ranch and less expensive to construct it. However, it would require us turning down this grant and applying for the next round of O.G.A.'s grants, which, um, is coming up. Which is also a grant that this, um, committee could look at. Because they specifically told me the park that you're looking to construct is literally the prototype for what they do with these types of grants, constructing new parks. So, we could apply for that grant, we're still gonna have some financial issues in terms of matching grants, right? Cause this could be a large project and things of that nature, but with that being said. If it was to go to the East Ranch, we'd have to withdraw from this grant, we don't wanna withdraw from this grant, so we're moving forward with that location.
And I'm always in favor of considering all alternatives, you know, and, and we've thought about this all along and we're, we're also quite aware. Yeah, we've looked very closely at every component that has been suggested. Uh, since, you know, uh, ninety-four, uh, for putting on the East Ranch Community Park. Asking, so does it fit in with conservation easement, um, and, well, okay, um. Um, uh, corn toss and horseshoes are not on the, uh, and the disc golf isn't on the, in that list. But we've already, you know, gotten the feedback that that is entirely within the spirit of everything. Um, the volume of cement that would be involved in a skate park would, um. We might be surprised how much the cost would be. Or whatever we have to do related to the EIR, um, and I don't know, I would say it all right, but there would be permitting costs that. Um, wouldn't be pretty and. I, it's their call, there was a recent election and I would, um. Not want to let go of the bird in hand of the grant, uh, in hopes of a federal grant, uh. Anytime in the next, uh, four years, yeah, uh, public comment, yeah.
If you wanna go, so, um. I, couple questions, so if you were to apply for the federal grant. Are you able to do that but still hang on to the initial grant that you have? Or by applying, then you, you basically are relinquishing the grant that you currently have?
Yeah, so we wouldn't be able to apply for, for both grants, um.
Okay, so.
With the purpose of the skate park being at a new location.
Yeah, you can't do it like, well, if, if not here, then there, but keep the grant that you have, so you'd have to basically squash one. In hopes of getting approved for the other, so, um, as, uh. Nonpartisan person that doesn't live here, you know, I, I don't think that's the best idea, um, also. I know I had a chance to look at kind of the plans for the skate park and kind of the costs and stuff, so. In my mind, just immediately seeing that, uh, the funding has a shortfall. But the restroom costs a half a million dollars up on East Ranch, but it's only forty-seven thousand dollars here. So, that maybe would increase the cost of building the skate park up on this East Ranch, which I haven't had a chance to go and look at. Um, but I, I don't know if that's correct, um.
Yeah, it's not correct in terms of the restroom, the restroom, we have a forty-seven thousand dollar grant to apply towards the restroom.
Okay, okay, I gotcha.
But this restroom is a one-stall, um, unisex. It's gonna be expensive, you know.
Skaters are easy, we, we, you know, porta-potties, you know, trees around the corner.
To reiterate, we're moving forward with the grant.
Yes.
For the award in January and we, we just have to buy our time, but the East Ranch was merely an exploratory exercise.
And I, I, I completely understand that, it's, it's basically just exercising different options, um, not committing yourself to one until the need to commit. Yeah, so I, I completely understand that, um. Yeah, that was, that was it on my end.
Yes, I, I wanna reel into the discussion a little bit, cause this topic is, yeah, I'll, Chelsea, I'll later tenure, comment in a moment, but. Uh, this topic is to, to understand the engagement, uh, that, that we've got. Uh, for the community park plans and, and, and how to bring that forward, um. And going deep into alternatives for the skate park is not on this agenda and will be violating our, our, our bylaws. If we, you know, dive into that, because, you know, frankly, whoever looks at the agenda would not have had a chance to know that was on the agenda to do. So, Chelsea, you wanted to speak, but I'll, you know, entertain that and then I'm gonna close off further discussion on, on. Tried to discuss the alternative locations of the skate park, because that's not what's on the agenda.
Yeah, mine is kind of a question slash comment, it's, it's a little bit retroactive. This conversation is starting to remind me a lot of times when Cindy Staidow was still with us, bless her, um, and we were talking about the master plan. That nobody knew what that was, so, um. I'm, I'm just gonna go ahead and just say, we just want transparency, if there's some other undercurrent going on over here with that piece of land. It's getting kind of tiresome for us to continue fighting and fighting, getting these grants, having our kids raise money. I drive up here from LA eighteen plus times a year just on my own pro bono, so there's a lot of love in this project. So, transparency is key and greatly appreciated, if there's gonna be some swift switch over to the East Ranch, boy, we'd sure like to know it. Because if there's a secret master plan, you know, that's, that's a, that's, just feels like, you know, kind of a kick in the side to us a little bit, that's all.
I'll, I'll answer quickly, there is no conspiracy, there is no master plan.
No conspiracy, would that, remember that term, it was to be, or maybe you don't, it was there.
And then there's this location, which has been chosen, this is a funding issue and only a funding issue. Period.
Got it.
And if, if.
I've said.
I was just, we're, we're exploring, if there is a barrier to construction of the skate park or an alternative to the East Ranch, you know. I would at least look at this, or I, as a general manager, would have to look at it as an option. If, if having you folks here saying industry's coming in and we're gonna save this project, I'm all for it, but I won't talk about these ranch anymore.
Right, yeah, no conspiracy theory, there was a time when there was some secret master plan, no one knew who it was, so, or none of us did at least, so that's, it was just starting to sound familiar, that's all.
It's all, that, those, those folks are gone.
And I am not trying to, you know, lightning fires here. My concern is that we created a plan that did not include this and we're trying to get community engagement. And then run it up the fly pole to the CCSD and so obviously our whole heart and focus has been trying to get this done. This would put a huge wrench in it.
Yeah.
Um, and I would be loathe to go back out to the community with another engagement session.
Yes.
Um.
I don't think that's.
Because we've done this too many times and there's still a lot of people asking why, why doesn't this happen, that we already said yes to this many, many times. So.
That's positive and we might, yeah, great.
So, we did, just to go through the organizations we've hit so far, green space, um, Friends of the Fiscalini Ranch Preserve, Rotary Club. Um, the dog park, Shelley, have you run, run that up the dog park fly pole?
No.
Okay. Um, I can send you all the stuff again, cause I'm.
I still have it.
Okay.
I, um, I was hoping to get a help with the first run.
And I'm happy to help you if you give me a day, I'll, I can show up.
Okay.
And I have stuff printed out, which helps.
Here, cause there's a smaller board.
Yeah, we can do it at the dog park.
Yeah, Shannon can get with you, Jeff, I mean, this, you know, it's, it's let us know.
Um, CYA, Julie?
Yeah, I, I was, and I have to apologize because I, I was not told that the Spanish translation was available.
Oh, sorry, I just posted it right out that next day on the internet, so.
I wasn't made aware and so the only, the two areas I was waiting on was our school district and CYA. For that element, so I've been in contact with Michael and of course now know that those materials are available. I've already been in contact with our superintendent, um. We're working towards a way to deliver that message to the school district. It may not be till the early part of next year, so that might need to be something I responsibly hand over to you, Shannon, to best serve, how to get that.
Okay, if that's the case, then we'll probably figure out another way to do it, so that we get it done with our timeframe of the investment, so.
And, and also, yeah, re- reminder, right, the, you know, the. The structure of, of the ad hoc committees, uh, ground rules are pretty simple. We could have two and only two members of the standing committee as members of the ad hoc committee, um. Um, the ad hoc committee can choose to engage members of the public in any capacity. As long as they're a column, you know, ad hoc committee members, um, but the ad hoc committee can engage, yeah, any. Hmm, enthusiastic members of the public such as Ms. Amade, uh, to, to bring scopes to, uh, to the public. Um, that's one of the reasons that on the survey and all the input, we're asking people to volunteer. Are you interested in helping in, in various ways? Um, and what I meant, uh.
Do you feel, Michael, that that has a controlled message, in other words, is, are those people gonna be informed enough to be able to do presentations?
So. An, an ad hoc committee of, of, uh, this, solely Mr. Wilson, uh, if they're gonna engage someone from the public in their ad hoc committee.
Fair enough.
They're gonna make bloody well sure that the message they're bringing, that they would only have someone. Bringing the message out, uh, for example, if they, they were to say, hey, Robbie, would you, would you help us out bringing the message to. Some, uh, professional skate entity, you know, you know, they might, you know, that Robbie might be the best choice. Uh, if it's, um, you know, people involved in forestry, you know, Jeff might say, hey, Laura, can you bring this? In other words, there's different members of the public that the ad hoc committee might engage to engage constituencies that. They're related to and their responsibility is to make sure that whoever is involved brings the right message. So, yeah, no, that's a good question. So, it's, it was very, that's all I'm saying.
Well, and I think that the presentation is pretty self-explanatory, if you go on the website and look at the, the plan, the presentation and the form. You have a very good idea of what we're proposing and again, it's nothing, um, so drastic that someone would not recognize it as something we've been trying to do for thirty years, so. I think it's pretty simple.
Oh, one other ground ruling I had, I had to bring up, because, uh, uh, other members of this, you know, committee have been involved in bringing these presentations out. There've been two or three of us involved in some of the presentations. Since the presentation was made, you know, open to public in the last standing committee meeting, and it's posted on the website, then it's fair game for any of us to to bring that. So whereas it's a violation if three of us are involved in developing something new, but if it's already posted, simply bringing what's posted to the public at the farmers markets, whatever, that's fine.
Yeah, it looks like the general manager is starting to get ready to leave.
I've read the gender review with the president.
I wanted to throw out a bomb before he left.
Oh, let's hear it.
I I really want to see the fields watered. Watered, the fields, the open fields, and you want the those for those water. You don't want, and and next time you go to the county, if you would ask them if 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 watering that field using the sixteen acre feet that's in the E I R here, if we used a non potable well to do so, if it would be in substantial conformity with the E I R. And it's on page two, five.
Are you talking about the potential?
I just want to make sure, are you talking about the potential playing fields?
Yeah.
Understood.
Well, you want to untap that well?
There's a well out there.
Yeah.
It's a private well. It's been used, it's the Phillips well, wasn't even part of the ranch. You could water that. I'm just saying.
Again, I I don't disagree, but this is just about community engagement for the the components at a very high level. So we haven't dug into the project associated with each one of these.
The bomb that I'm putting out there is let's try, we don't have to mention it now. We don't, we don't even have to do it now.
But we're still doing. If it comes just something to think about, some if it comes from our wells, that goes against our diversion. So there could be some opposition.
Right, and 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 then they talk about how much we could use and how we could use it. So Michelle said that plan showing use of the bathroom control system or similar. Irrigation, just saying this, yeah.
I would just say that because of the field that we're establishing there in a low cost method, any change to it in the future would be easy. Right?
Yeah, we're we're trying to get a base.
We decided we want to get rid of it. It's just some old dirt field out there that we've been mowing, throwing some seed on. It's not like we're carrying.
We're not doing turf.
It's not like we screwed up the grammar school.
And again, we're not diving into the particulars associated with each project. There's a lot of design work that needs to go into every single one of these components. Obviously, we haven't designed the playground. The only thing we've designed is the disco.
Okay, I was just saying, if I'm not on this committee next year, as we as we build.
Talking like that, they're gonna boot you.
Okay.
But I like, the idea is the well, the idea is the well.
Yeah.
Well.
You just put it on top and goes right back in.
The ad hoc committee is well aware of this alternative and has discussed it.
Okay, yes.
Well, I I just want to caution the narrative, because the narrative you're giving the public right now is that this is to be no water.
That's right.
And so.
That's right, doesn't mean.
Yeah, I'm just saying.
We're we're saying no town water. So if we come up with non potable or some other source.
Yeah.
That seems legit, but right now we're saying we will not take the town's water and use it. That was the idea behind that.
Potable water is a better word of putting it out.
Yeah.
So the 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 presentation, as it is posted on the website, came to the pros committee. And the pros committee discussed it and decided to go forward with it. I'd have to look back at the vote, but it was, it was in favor of proceeding with that plan and engagement engagement based on that plan. What you're bringing up is revision to that plan. That will be considered in the future along with other.
I'm filling out the form just like anybody else. And when I when I fill the form, I'm gonna say, I'm gonna suggest that we can sue a possibility of water in the future.
Just do it at the end of the form and the note, not in each one. Messes up all my beautiful charts and stuff. Also, I would ask too, if you have, if you want to do presentation, you're making presentations or have someone who wants a presentation, instead of reaching out to Michael, maybe you reach out to Jeff and I, because we have all the materials and are been doing it and can help or give you the materials. So I I don't know.
No, I know one of them first, you know, Shannon and Jeff were on first. And on the Spanish, like I was.
You could ask me.
It was some, I don't know, a few weeks ago, I was looking and it's like, I was looking for something, and it's like, huh.
I'm sorry, I said I would have it up the next day.
There it is, wow.
Yeah.
And I didn't, you know, and I, anyway, well done.
So, okay. Yeah, I said I'd have it up the next day, I totally had it up the next day. Cambria Historical Society, Jeff, you did that. Good job. The Scholarship Foundation, I'm still kind of begging them for time. They have a very packed agenda and it's not going very well. Oops. All right.
It's still up here.
Okay. Um, North Coast Advisory, that didn't already happen? I thought it happened.
Yes, yeah, yeah, sorry, I didn't update this, but, you know, we had done a lot of good questions, a lot of positive reception, and I don't know how many people, but I I had the Q R code up there. And so almost based on the date, you know, if you get some comments, some surveys around October sixteen, yeah, so so yes, I I did that.
Okay, I'm sorry, I skipped the Slow County Parks and Rec. We're going to be doing that, it's on the agenda in December, so it'll probably be one of the latest engagement sessions that we have. The Chamber of Commerce, Steve?
I forgot about that today.
So.
And Jeff, I I.
It says tentatively scheduled for eleven nineteen, which should be today.
Today.
So we missed our chance.
Jeff texted me while I was at the meeting and says, hey, am I supposed to be there today? And I'm just like, oh, I'm so glad you're not, because there was no room, it would not have.
Four hours.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, we've got some challenges there.
Okay, so we won't, we won't freak out about that one.
But just real quickly on that, is there a is there a December meeting? And if so, we could, I mean, I'm happy to do it if if that works, if not.
Yeah, we would be happy to have it.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
Because we'll get in and out at nine o'clock.
Yeah, okay, I'll I'll get with you and on details, okay.
Um, the Tourism Board, that's, we did that one, and the Cambria Community Council, which I heard they were very friendly, was nice. American Legion and Lions, both done. The school district, it's kind of partially done. The P T A saw what we had and they picked it up and ran with it, so some of the P T A people have gotten it. Farmers Market has been judiciously done. It is actually been going, having been standing out in Farmers Market now for over two years, doing the same stuff, it has gone surprisingly well. I've hardly got yelled at at all. Jeff is great, and we're getting.
You're running a little more this time.
Yeah, well, instead of tackling people, I just have a sign saying, asking you about your community park, and people come up and ask, which is much nicer.
Yeah.
It's much more of a discussion. So that's been going well, we're continuing to do that. The library, I reached out initially, haven't followed up. I'll see if I can still put something together. Local churches, I still think are a great way. But I would like to kind of extend that to say that if you present at your local churches, that's great, but it would also really, really help if everyone just presented in their local communities, their their friend groups. I reached out to my entire neighborhood and showed everybody my little presentation and got a lot of great feedback. And so, you know, I got a four block radius of people. That's a good chunk of people in Cambria, so if everyone does that, we'd actually be reaching a lot of people. The Odd Fellows is done, K S B Y picked it up, I noticed it was on Cal Coast News, Newsbreak Cambria got it. It's all on the webpage and it has been translated, so. And then I would also like to remind everybody that it's not necessarily about getting the feedback that is important, but it is about just telling people what we're doing. So they don't have to fill out a feedback form, we're not like crunching numbers this time. But we do want to show that we were out in the community and that everybody that we could possibly reach out to got this information. That's like the the whole effort behind this. Jeff, do I miss anything? And Jeff and I are getting very good at this, and so if anyone wants us to show up at their organization and do it, we can do it. We have printed out boards, so you don't have to have, you know, some sort of computer to be able to do it. We can do it, you know, without any tech. And I think that's it.
Shannon, I think you're doing a fantastic job.
Trying hard.
This is amazing. So come December, where do you think we're going to be at? If the, at our, at our, at our December meeting, are we going to be having, reviewing the, sort of like, okay, this is what we've got from the engagement? And asking that question, are there any changes to make? And if so, where are they? If not, then starting to line up towards a presentation to the C C S B board, which might, I was thinking January, but since it might be better for the February-ish. Because.
If there's still deciding on us and stuff in January.
Oh, yeah, there'd be a new, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, that might be better in February.
There may be a two bit.
My, my.
Maybe Michael won't be here.
It's possible.
You guys need backing.
My suggestion is that in December, this group makes a recommendation and and you decide just the new group decides whether to carry it forward or not. It's probably the same except for Julie. It could be the same.
So we have the the piece of the county, the little outlook meeting that we need to get in. So my, where my mind is on this is that Shannon and I, when we decide to cut the feedback off and we go in and we take our general observations as well as the data in the the survey responses, and we tabulate that and come up with kind of a summary, all right? And we determine what, maybe if there are any changes that need to be made to the plan. And we would, hopefully that coincides with what Matt is doing to get that meeting together, outlook meeting with the county, and we could take that insight and the insight that we've gotten from the surveys and the community feedback. And we package that up for a, let's just call it our final draft proposal that we could bring to the board in January for initial review and look for a vote in February, feedback, tailor and a vote in February. Is that?
So can we submit? So just right, and I did forget that, we do plan to take our this, all this stuff to the county just to say, hey, can you help us, like, what are we gonna need permits, what's gonna be our stumbling blocks? You know, I think Matt mentioned the flood plain, we can steer well clear of the flood plain, so we can not issue. And then we bring what we get from the county back to this board. Look at our presentation, make adjustments, make adjustments to the plan, the actual written document. Submit the plan as a written document to the board in January with a presentation to follow in February, so they have a chance to look at it and make feedback.
Michael, may I add in for just a second?
Sounds good, yes.
I appreciate this entire dialogue. I am very challenged with it right now, because I don't know how you can do any of this until a decision is made about. State law.
Oh, no.
Okay, so right now I've got narratives working against this project.
I want to do this, I want to push this through so that you can have the skate park on there.
Thank you. There are narratives working against this project right now because of the idea of moving it to the East Ranch. And when I have those individuals working the narratives to say there's a possibility for it to go out there and not the district coming back saying, okay, we've gone through the process of thinking about it, it's not feasible, we're gonna keep it where it is, that changes the support to a project. And so I don't know how you, you're talking about six thousand square feet of concrete. I don't know how you start moving these plans forward until you have an understanding of what's going to happen with this project.
Honestly, they haven't brought any project to us. I mean, today's the first time I've ever heard that someone is considering moving it on to the community park property.
Perspective on this, if I may.
Yes, please. I'm not trying to be disrespectful in any way. I'm just saying, you're gonna be spending a lot of energy and effort lifting so plans.
We have to table it like for, you know.
I'm very perspective on this. All right, and just a few sports analogies, because this is this contentious and that will that will cool things down. And this golf, the best this golf courses have trees in the middle, have barriers everywhere that you have to throw around. I've played a bit of football. If there's no play you run that you have a free, that you don't have a defensive line working against you. In a soccer match, there's always defenders that you have to work around. We 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 have, we have a goal we're working towards. We're trying to bring this plan, and we think it's a good plan. We're bringing it forward. We see there's obstacles, we don't stop, stop running, just because we see there are obstacles on the field. No, we, you know, we, you know, we take that into consideration, but we keep going forward, yeah.
So I just, this is, I think what I'm understanding is that the East Ranch is not a proposal. It's not a proposed, like, let's move the skate park. It is, it is merely, and it's a, it's an alternative plan if the funding does not come through.
Honestly, I haven't heard it's an alternative plan. This is the first time we've even heard it today, so it means just an idea that someone's bought up.
It's an idea of, hey, if it doesn't work out, so it's like, hey, if if I'm running and I run into a wall, at least I know on my right hand side, there's a trap door and I can make it through. So obviously, that doesn't seem like what anybody wants to do is to move it, because there's so much hard work that's.
I gotta say to you, I'm a little taken aback. Seems like we should have had some sort of heads up that this was even being considered, so that we could have prepared.
I've been in several meetings, Jim, and this has been the direction of the district.
Interesting.
So no one thought to tell us.
Yeah, I heard heard this a couple days ago as FYI.
I I appreciate minimizing it as an FYI, Michael, and again, I'm trying to be very respectful right now.
But this group had nothing to do with that.
No, 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 I I'm not saying that at all, Shannon, I'm part of this group. I mean, I I'm I'm behind everything going. What I'm saying is there is traction with this narrative being used as an opportunity or being presented as something that's viable. You just heard your general manager talk numbers, right? If there was a lot of numbers that weren't included in that, and a lot of those numbers have to do with the environment, the environmental impact reports. And what we may lose in infrastructure, I should say, you know, when you're looking at one point two million, which is the number that's being thrown around, which is the number we've been tracking to the entire time, inflation has caught up, something that when you take four and a half years to do a project, enters the picture. So when you look at the one point two million dollar park, the park itself is four hundred thousand dollars. The rest of it is infrastructure being required by the county. So the argument to say it would be cheaper to put it over at the East Ranch doesn't hold, in my opinion. I get to have an opinion, and that is because by the time you start getting into one, pushing the can down the line, inflation will continue to the number, and environmental impact reports will equal or supersede.
For sure.
What it's going to take to replace what you're arguing in infrastructure. But those narratives are happening, so all I'm saying is to be respectful to the processes of this group and all the work we're doing out there is to come clean with the entire narrative and and say, these are the realities. We're not scared of the number, it's not even that big of a number. We're talking about like two to three hundred thousand dollars. So I'm coming at it from a reverse engineering perspective, going, what can we do to cost engineer this? Are there line items that we can get in kind contribution to, like not excavating, because the minute we excavate, we're now activating a grant, but we can demo it. I've got appointments next week with four different demo companies who will step into a contract potentially with C C S D as an in kind contribution to take that budget item out of the line, right? There's creative ways to get this project. You don't, in my opinion, you don't take a one point two million dollar project and say, we've hit the wall, we're short three hundred thousand because of inflation, let's bail the grant and move to the East Ranch. I'm just calling this what it is.
And so we, I mean, I don't want to also lose momentum with our projects that we've been working so hard, because we know.
That's why I'm saying this.
We want to be able to at least do a couple of the components.
That's that's.
That's why I'm saying this right now. But that means we just table our our everything, waiting for them to decide. But that means we just table our, our everything, waiting for them to decide and they've been deciding for thirty years.
Shannon, that's what I'm talking right now. That's why I'm having.
I'm not arguing with you. I'm just saying, I, I don't wanna.
I don't want all of this work to get derailed. And you can't take a six thousand, six thousand square foot skate park of concrete, the narratives that we've had to hurdle. Just on this piece of parcel to this community, because many people in this community don't want anything to change, okay? And you've been part of these conversations, Shannon, to think that you're gonna put that concrete on the East Ranch? And not have people in this community go absolutely no?
Okay.
Yeah, I agree.
I wanna pause this one-on-one, you know, debate here, so let's. Not very word, but i- if I may. Julie, okay, cause we're, we're going deep into this, um. Rewind a bit. One of the projects that, uh, you know, the, um. There was a presentation last, sometime last year by Cambrians for Aquatics, you know.
Yes, I was pretty to that.
They, they proposed, uh, and discussed a, an aquatic center on the, on the East Ranch. Um, the ad hoc committee knew that was out there and it may be coming in, but at, at, you know, while the, uh, ad hoc committee was working their alternatives. At no, at no point had the Cambrians for Aquatics brought, you know, proposal that sort of met the requirements that, you know. Then President Karen Dean stipulated to bring back. Um, so the ad hoc committee went forward without consideration of that, knowing that if they bring it in, that, okay, that'll be considered. Not necessarily added, but considered. Um. This is not that dissimilar.
Agreed.
Um, there is, someone is asking the question. Don't get upset that someone's asking the question. If they don't ask the question, that's foolish, you know? So the general manager and staff are asking, are there, uh, what are all the ways we might shave costs? We, what are all the ways we might get this done? And it doesn't bother me that he's looking at all the possibilities. And, um, there's other possibilities that we want to make sure get considered as well. Uh, what are, that's what you're bringing up.
Yes.
But meanwhile, the scope of this is the community park, so. Yeah, I, I wanna pause further debate on our discussion or consideration of the skate park location because we don't control that at this time. So let's, um, bring it back to the engagement. Um, I think the suggestion I heard was, uh, we're gonna try to bring this in December on the agenda with. Here is a finalized plan for discussion based on all of the input from the engagement sessions. That, um, would, you know, would have us, you know, up and down boat, and then we would bring it to the board in January. Uh, and perhaps again in February, um, and we'll go into further detail on, I mean, that's out of the path forward, right? Yeah, I mean, just my experience, understanding, it's probably realistic and pragmatic to think about presenting it initially to the board in January. Have the debate, obviously some public input at that point as well, I'm confident. But look for any refinements that would need to come at that time. To present a final plan in February where we're actually seeking approval. Right, so, so generally. So it's a two-step process with the board that'll bear.
Presentation without, without the word consideration would be a presentation.
Uh, yeah, I don't know that stuff, but yeah.
Are you seeking an approval for the components to be where they're placed right now?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, that's why we're talking. That's why I'm saying what I'm saying. Because, so if they're gonna reject us, you're saying, there is a possibility that we reject our plan, our phase three plan, based on the fact that they. Think the skate park is going to move up there. That is a possibility. I am heads down gonna continue with what we have decided to do for phase three of our community park plan. So there's, I mean, it's just a Michael's point. We can't, we can't just stop because they are talking about that.
I, I'm not suggesting to stop.
Comment on this. Yeah, so Laura's got her hand up. It's a good time for public comment.
And also Tony does a question. Since the executive director of, um, Fiscolini is out of the country. Uh, I'm not sure if the Fiscolini Board has heard if any of this, if, if a lot of these meetings have been, you know, out of the public view. So that seems.
They, they, they had the presentation. And.
Of yours, but I mean, have they heard about the skate park potentially with six thousand tons of.
Again, uh.
I'm sorry, I've got, I've gotta say this. You should not even think about it. If you're, you've got your plan, go with your plan, ignore this. Yeah, I'm sorry.
That's what I'm trying to say.
It's just, some people have talked about it, so it's not a plan. They haven't even got anywhere close to it. Go with the plan you've got, do not. Mess around with it, just go ahead.
Exactly what I'm trying to say. This is not a plan. People are talking, but it's not a plan. I like the schedule.
Thank you.
Fantastic. Yeah. And Tony, keep coming. Thank you. The only caveat I've got on that is still waiting for Matt to set up the meeting with Monty and the county and, I mean. I pinged him on that, said, Matt, we really need that in like early to the December. So we're, that's the only thing that might not be forthcoming in the middle by the time we next meet. But hopefully it would come at the very latest, maybe in early January and we could adapt.
I would say the only thing that's pushed out our timeline is, because we really do want to meet with the county and present a whole thing to the county.
We, we need to meet.
Um, it's gonna really help our presentation to the board, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, no, the county's planning.
Yeah.
Yeah, may I just add in?
Yeah.
I'm not suggesting to stop the plan. I, I'm, I'm wanting to have this conversation to say. Warning, like, you know, I, it, it, the components are in place, so.
That's what I was asking Matt, exactly.
I, I've been working towards this plan. I've been doing the work that we've all been doing.
Yeah, I know.
Plan, so I'm.
Yeah. Yeah, you were trying to make both plans forward.
Yes.
Yeah, I.
We're gonna see if we have to adapt at some point down the line. We do. You know, we make space, we change things from hope that doesn't happen, but I mean, now it's, I think, full speed ahead.
Yep, yeah, in a good soccer match, what I want from a referee is what Tony just did.
Say it like. This, yeah, um, pros. So, um, and there's no voting on this. This is like.
This guy's. An update, yeah.
Anything else?
Um.
On the engagement. Do you need any further help or action on any of the engagement sessions?
No, just what I said. Just reach out to your local community, your friends, get the word out. The idea is to get the word out.
For Friday. Are you gonna be there?
I'll be there.
Okay, I'm there, so we're good.
We're good on Friday. Um, the presentation boards are getting a little worn out in the wind and stuff, so. Definitely wanna wrap this up, that first, try and wrap up engagement that first weekend in December, so.
So, um, that brings us to, um.
Our goals.
Six B, discuss and update the pros, goals, progress report. Uh, at the last meeting, we said, uh, holy smokes, the, um, uh, community park is. What we're working on, let's kick that down the road, um, based on your, your recommendation, um.
Did I read the name? Um, so community park plan, we've been, I have been updating it, um, as things happen, so it will have a smidge of a change. And then, um. Yeah, you, we've both been on the goals report, putting stuff on there, so.
For the community park?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, you also did another something else.
Yeah, I did the other, uh, open parcels, but yeah, I mean, it's just, it's once again, just the engagement, then head down on, on that. Right?
Yeah, so that's updated. We'll have a fresh one for next, um, PDF to put on the internet or on the website. Um, Jeff, you updated the inventory of CCSD-owned undeveloped properties.
Yeah, that's weird. Just a moment on, on that, so.
Oh, yeah. Um, the, do we have any update on the relationship with Slow County Parks and Rec? Anything going on?
Well, uh, uh, again, uh, the, our district representative, district two, in this case, uh, Pandora.
Oh, yeah.
It has been, uh, replaced, um, and, um. Jeff will be going to their meeting, uh, in a couple weeks.
Yeah.
Yes, yeah. Bring this forward.
We're going that.
Yeah.
Okay, so, I'll update with that.
Yeah.
Um, rodeo grounds road, there's no update with that, and the trail connecting west and east ranch, there is no update with that.
I, I think what we want to do on the rodeo grounds road is exactly what Mr. Church brought to the CCSD board last Thursday. Is, uh, yeah, it's really nice that it was graded. I think his comment was really nice that the county graded it. But what we really need, considering all of the important traffic going in and out, is a paved road. And we, we all agree.
We all agree.
Um, and, uh.
Um, I did think, and I put it on here already, but, uh, there's, uh, obviously people out here petitioning the Caltrans right now about animal corridors and all sorts of things. Um, I think petitions might be the only way to get the Caltrans attention. Um, and so I added that to the list as an idea. I don't have the bandwidth to do it right now. I don't think any of us do, but maybe if we plan for, like, to start some sort of movement about this. In six months or so, we can put together some sort of, uh. And all, some sort of petition input, something. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. So just my idea there. And that's it. Unless anyone else has any updates on our goals.
Well done. Yeah, just, sorry, if I may, just real quickly, so, so everybody knows, I did develop a draft framework for the open parcels. That I submitted to Matt and, and David. I wish they were here. I don't really know what the next step is on that, you guys, but framework's there. It's a three, three-level priority scheme. Uh, parcel by parcel, with a whole host of different data points to populate. And as far as the management plan is concerned, so I'm. Very much into helping with that, so, but it's in Matt's and David's hands now. Yeah, and, uh, we took that off with the ad hoc committee, uh, at the last meeting for, for, for the two reasons. Uh, but I mean, primarily, it's, yeah, it's a, it's a goal of the board and you are our representative on pros. Working with that effort and, uh, why, you know, I'm. Uh, I'm watching when any action starts proceeding on it, because there are so many, uh, you know, irons in the fire. Uh, that one hasn't started warming up yet. When that warms up, you know, I'll be all over it and make sure you're involved. Anything else? All right.
If you have a, if you have a ad hoc committee and you need some public input on that. To help with, let us know, let the forest committee know.
Yeah, I mean, you've always been in mind, Laura, but it's not, you know.
I'm just.
I've said my piece on that, so.
I'm just volunteering. When you get to that point, I mean, your ad hoc committee needs some public input. I will volunteer.
Yeah. Yep. Uh, future agenda items, um. Uh, we, at the last meeting, um, we had some discussion about discussing signage on the bluff. Uh, and, um, now that we have, you know, we, we were out. Last Wednesday, or was it Saturday? I've lost track, removing ice plant from, from the bluff. And, um, the more ice plant you get off the bluff, you start saying, yeah, somebody could walk right up there now. And so, uh, that's important. I didn't put it on today's agenda since, okay, the executive director of FFRP is not a country. So, uh, that may come on the December agenda. We'll see if it's appropriate time. Other future agenda topics? Um, well then, um, you know, before I adjourn, I just wanna thank our visitors for coming. I mean, this was fantastic. Um, the energy in the room was, was great, so thank you for your contributions and, um, yeah, thank you for raising all the issues you did. Um, because that's the only way we, we know what's important, so thank you and. I guess I'm supposed to say it's, uh, this is not like, it's Saturday Night Live, right? No, it's, it's three forty-five PM and this meeting is adjourned. Thank you all.